This is the May 11, 2022, meeting of the Planning Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1168, Hobson Gardens in St. James. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1168, map of Hobson Gardens. The subdivision number 1168, map of Hobson Gardens, received conditional final approval for a four lot subdivision from the Planning Board on April 21, 2021. Approval of this subdivision expired on April 16, 2022. The applicant submitted a request for a second extension on April 12, 2022. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension of 180 days. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number, uh, Plan 2022, Extension of Conditional Final Approval for Number 1168, Map of Hobson Gardens. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1168, Map of Hobson Gardens, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive 180-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision Number 1168, Map of Hobson Gardens, to expire on October 13, 2022. And we have the affidavit of posting.
Thank you. Mr. Tramarko?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. We respectfully request you follow the recommendation of the Planning Department and extend the conditional final approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Does the Board have any questions? In the matter of Number 1168, Map of Hobson Gardens, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The heari- hearing is closed. And in the matter of extension of conditional final approval, Number 1168, Map of Hobson Gardens, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted.
The next item is an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision Number 1173, Platte and White Platte in Smithtown. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision Number 1173, Map of Platte and White Platte, for a period of 180 days. The subdivision Number 1173, Map of Platte and White Platte, received conditional final approval from the Planning Board on May 23, 2018. The subdivision has received seven extensions of approval, with the most recent one expiring on May 2, 2022. The applicant requested an eighth extension on May 2, 2022, in order to obtain more time to file the map in the county clerk's office. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends a retroactive extension of 180 days. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1173, Map of Platte and White Platte, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive 180-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1173, Map of Platte and White Platte, to expire on October 29, 2022. And we have the affidavit of posting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tramarko.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. Respectfully request you follow the recommendation of the Planning Department and extend the conditional, uh, final approval of Platte and White.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Does the Board have any questions? Okay. In the matter of Number 1173, Map of Platte and White Platte, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed. In the matter of number, in matter of extension of conditional final approval for Number 1173, Map of Platte and White Platte, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted.
Thank you. The next item is a zone change petition for, uh, case number 2022-02, The Preserve's at Smithtown LLC. Reason for, uh, report? The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on May 11, 2022, to consider amending conditions of approval for Zone Change Petition 90-03A, which was approved December 10, 1996. The applicant is The Preserve at Smithtown LLC. Uh, the zoning and land use, the site is Zoned RC and R15, uh, has a multifamily retirement community under construction. To the north is R15 with vacant land and single-family residences beyond. To the south is own neighborhood business along Smithtown Boulevard and R10 beyond. It's got office, retail, and single-family residences. East is zoned NB, R10 and R15, with a school and single-family residences. To the west is zoned NB and R15, uh, with office and retail, shopping center, and single-family The zoning history, prior to 1996, uh, the site was Zoned R15 with the southern 200 feet along Smithtown Boulevard, zoned neighborhood business. In 1996, the Zone Change Petition 90-03A was approved to RC and R15 with 15 conditions for 192 units. In 1999, the site plan was approved for 192 units. In 2015, Zone Change Petition 2015-01 was filed to modify covenants and special exception for bonus density units in a retirement community that was withdrawn. In 2020, Site Plan Addendum 19-14A was approved for site layout and building modifications of the previous approved site plan. The proposed number of units decreased from 192 to 180. The addendum complied with the conditions of zone change approval. In 2022, Zone Change Petition 2022-02 was filed and a request amendment of conditions of Zone Change Petition 90-03A. The site, The Preserve at Smithtown, is a 24-acre parcel with 523 feet of frontage on Smithtown Boulevard. The site is currently under construction for a retirement community. The retirement community contains 180 units, separated into 18 residential buildings with 10 units per building. The site also contains a clubhouse, gatehouse, and sewage treatment plant. The 18 residential buildings are divided into three different types of buildings. Uh, Type A has a building footprint of 5,760 square feet and square footage of 11,018 square feet. Type B has a building footprint of 3,940 square feet and a building square footage of 7,374 square feet. And Type C has a building footprint of 4,784 square feet and a building square footage of 9,018 square feet. The approved site plan depicts seven Type A buildings, four Type B buildings, and seven Type C buildings. Six of the seven Type A buildings are currently under construction. The applicant seeks to convert all 18 residential buildings to Type A. This change will increase the total building footprint and total building square footage of the overall site and decrease the landscape area of the overall site. This proposed change requires an amendment of three of the conditions of zone change approval. The proposal, the applicant proposes to amend the following conditions of approval of Zone Change Petition 90-03A. Condition five, the total building for, footprint of all buildings on the 19.231-acre parcel zoned retirement community described in Exhibit D shall not exceed 93,600 square feet. They're proposing a footprint of all buildings 107,561 square feet, which is a 14.9% increase. Condition six, the total square footage of all buildings on the 19.231-acre parcel zoned RC, uh, was, Retirement Community, described in Exhibit D, shall not exceed 186,000 square feet. The total proposed square footage of all buildings is 201,326 square feet. That's an 8.2% increase. And condition five, a minimum landscape area of 464,542 square feet shall be provided as part of the overall development of the parcel described in Exhibit A, as shown in Table 1, Page 8, and Figure 6, Page 14 of the Revised Final Environmental Impact Statement. A minimum landscape area of 394,488 square feet is proposed, which is a 15% decrease. The Planning Department would like to point out that condition nine of Zone Change Approval required a minimum natural area of 282,192 square feet, including the perimeter buffers. The applicant is proposing 363,938 square feet of natural area, including the perimeter buffers. That's 81,746 square feet more than required. The applicant has indicated they could convert 70,054 square feet of natural area on the property to landscape area to comply with condition 10 and still comply with condition nine, however, is more advantageous to preserve natural vegetated areas. The rezoning in 1996 was subject to an environmental impact statement, and the conditions were a result of an extensive, extensive environmental review. Any change to the conditions of the 1996 approval may be subject to additional environmental review and is currently being analyzed by the Town Department of Environment and Waterways. The Department of Environment and Waterways would like to review the minutes of the May 11, 2022 Planning Board hearing and receive a recommendation from the Planning Board to determine if additional steps are necessary. This analysis concerns only the part of the application related to the zone change. An additional report may be prepared by the Planning Department at such time as the Town Board hearing is scheduled and feedback from the Department of Environment and Waterways is received. The Planning Department offers the following comments for the Board's consideration. A, as indicated above, the applicant could reduce the natural area and increase the landscaped area to comply with both conditions nine and 10 of the Zone Change Approval. The Planning Department recommends preservation of natural area in lieu of more landscaped area. Natural area is beneficial for wildlife, the environment, and requires little to no maintenance as compared to landscaped areas. The Board should consider increasing the minimum amount of natural area, including perimeter buffers, to a minimum of 363,938 square feet in order to offset the loss of landscaped area. B, while the proposal resulted in an increase in building footprint and building square footage, the applicant has reduced the number of units from 192 to 180. This results in a decrease in traffic, water usage, wastewater generation, and impact on community services. C, while the proposal results in a 13,961-square-foot increase in impervious surfaces due to the larger building footprint, it appears this can be offset by the excess of 11,692 square feet of natural and landscaped area than what was conditioned. To further the offset of increased impervious surfaces, 14 parking stalls throughout the site can be removed in lieu of being constructed. The parking requirement of the site is 256, whereas 270 are proposed. Reducing parking stalls will reduce impervious surfaces. The applicant should con- consider eliminating or landbaking 14 parking stalls. D, if the conditions are approved, a revised application to the Board of Site Plan Review will be required. The Board of Site Plan Review has further discretion on all proposed changes, including layout, landscaping, and architecture. Eight, referral to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Pursuant to Section 239M of New York State General Municipal Law, this application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because it is located within 500 feet of a county road. The Suffolk County Planning Commission considers this petition to be matter for local determination. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of The Preserve at Smithtown LLC to amend conditions 5, 6, and 10 of Zone Change Petition 90-03A, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby recommends the Town Board approve Zone Change Petition 2022-02, The Preserve at Smithtown LLC, to amend conditions 5, 6, and 10 for Zone Change Petition 90-03A, as follows and subject to the additional conditions. Condition five shall read, "The total building footprint of all buildings on 19.231-acre parcel zoned RC, Retirement Community, described in Exhibit D shall not exceed 107,561 square feet." Condition six, "The total square footage of all buildings on the 19.231-acre parcel zoned RC, Retirement Community, described in Exhibit D, shall not exceed 201,326 square feet." Condition 10, "A minimum landscaped area of 394,488 square feet shall be provided as part of the overall development of the parcel, described in Exhibit A, as shown in Table 1, Page 8, and Figure 6, Page 14 of the Revised Final Environmental Impact Statement." Conditions, one, the applicant should eliminate or landbank at least 14 parking stalls and consider additional landbank parking throughout the site as determined by the Board of Site Plan Review. Two, a minimum natural area of 363,938 square feet, including the perimeter buffers, shall be maintained as part of the overall development of the 24-acre parcel. Second resolved that this recommendation pertains solely to the Zone Change Request. The secret review has not been completed, nor have comments from the Department of Environment and Waterways been provided for consideration. Third resolved that nothing contained herein shall be construed or deemed as implicitly or explicitly proving or endorsing on the merits any subsequent requests for approval of any site plan for this property.
And is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Guardino?
Good evening. How are you? Can I just, uh?
State your name and address for the record for us, please.
Yes. It's, uh, it's Anthony Guardino. I'm a partner with the law firm of Farrell Fritz, Hop Dog, New York, representing the applicant. If I can just hand up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question.
All right.
You want to come up?
Excuse me. We will have a time for that, um, in a few minutes. Thank you.
Okay. So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name, again, Anthony Guardino, representing The Preserve at Smithtown LLC, which is the applicant, uh, in this matter. Uh, they are seeking to modify certain conditions of a change of zone for, uh, what was a 192-unit development that was originally approved, uh, approximately 25 years ago in, uh, in My client would like to modify certain conditions, as were mentioned in the memo. Uh, that was very comprehensive, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna repeat what was, uh, stated there. But it was to modify the conditions to allow all 10, uh, to allow all of the 10-unit buildings to be of a Type A design in order to create essentially additional living space in the units that were located in the smaller Type B and Type C buildings. Um, I have Mike Moranis here, who's an engineer with, uh, BB&amp;V, and I also have, uh, Jim Tunis, uh, who is a principal of The Preserve at Smithtown. Uh, I will skip the information about the property because you're fully familiar, the history, so, uh, I'll skip the, the long history. I'll start from the 2020, um, Site Plan Amendment that was granted, um, which modified the layout and the size of the previous approved buildings, and most importantly, reduced the total number of units from, as I mentioned, 192 to 180. And also importantly, removed the connection that previously existed to this development from Cathy Court. So that's no longer part of this application. The 180 units that were approved were to be evenly distributed within the 18 residential buildings. Seven of the buildings were the Type A, which is the larger building. Four of the buildings were to be Type B, and seven were to be Type C. Just for, for purposes of, of, of understanding the relative size of each. So the Type A had a footprint, and that's the largest one, that had a foot, building footprint of 5760, 5,760 square feet, and a building square footage of just over 11,000 square feet. The smallest building was the Type B building, and there were four of those, uh, proposed, and the, uh, footprint was, uh, 3,940 square feet, and the building square footage, total square footage, was 7,374 square feet. And then the C, which was the middle building, a middle-sized building, uh, mid-sized building, was, uh, 4,784 square feet, and the building square footage in total was just over 9,000 square feet. So, as you can see, the three building types were roughly the same size. There's not that much deviation between them. Um, there's only about 1,820 square-foot difference in the building footprint and about 3,600 square-foot difference in the building, total building square footage between the largest building and the smallest building. The deviation in footprint and square footage between the Type A and type, and the mid-sized Type C buildings was even less. Um, as you can see from the photograph of the buildings that are under construction, and I have, uh, Exhibit 8 in your booklet, you could see, uh, there's a, that's a picture of a Type A building that's actually, uh, it's up, uh, not fully constructed, so it's Exhibit A. You could see the building is not, is not a terribly large building. It is not very large. And that is the largest. So what the applicant is seeking to do, um, is, uh, is to enlarge, like I said, the Type B and Type C buil- buildings so that they all become the size of the Type A building. So in the past 25-plus years since the retirement community development was originally approved, seniors, uh, have remained, uh, more active and are extending their careers and taking on new employment that keeps them in the workforce. And living accommodations in general have evolved from what, uh, was typically a, a larger number of smaller rooms to more spacious, open s- floor plans. Um, that's just the way people are, are living these days, and, and, and the new homes reflect that. So my client's desire is to amend its development plan to make all of the buildings slightly larger, the Type A buildings. And that's shown in the site plan. Uh, the more active a person is, um, the more stuff that they need and they accumulate, and that requires more storage. I can tell you, based on my own experiences with my 83-year-old mother, uh, back in 1996, she was still resisting the need for a computer and a computer desk, and now she has a computer room and a printer, and so people just need more room. Um, the market trend for larger living spaces was already well underway, but then when the pandemic hit, people now began working remotely, as everyone knows. Um, and so the need for larger living areas became even more acute and virtually a necessity. As we ease, hopefully, out of the pandemic, and more and more employer, we're seeing more and more employers, uh, opting for a hybrid work schedule, so many employees are continuing to work from home and therefore, again, need a little bit more space. The proposed development will be occupied by residents who are 55 and older, and many of these residents, as I said, are still in the workforce and years away from retirement. My client is seeking to make, uh, modest changes to its development plan in order to offer its future residents of the Type B and C buildings the additional living space that they want and quite frankly, need. Um, the size, the increase, just again, for relative purposes, so you can see, the one-bedroom units, uh, going from roughly, uh, average 782 square feet to 842 square feet, so that's just a 7.6% increase. And the two-bedroom units, uh, from about 1,100 square feet to 1,240 square feet. That's about a 12% increase. Again, not a very large increase. I think these changes, uh, are relatively insignificant, and I don't think they're going to even be perceptible, um, to, uh, to, uh, to anyone, because the buildings, as you can see up on the overlay that's there, um, they'll be in the same location, the buildings will be the same height, they will have the same number of units and the same number of bedrooms. The only difference is the footprints of the floor area, and the floor area of Type B and C buildings will be slightly larger to give each unit in these buildings more living space. So you can see on the, the brown, I guess it's brown on the right, um, the, the area that's brown is the original, and the red spaces that you see on each end, that's essentially the additional space that we're seeking. But the footprint is essentially the same. Site plan, if you put them next to each other, and there's a, there's an exhibit in the book, um, here at, I think, Exhibit, uh, it actually shows it pretty well. 10? Yeah. Exhibit 10 in your booklet, and you could see the purple lines were the, uh, were the old, and the black lines are the new. And again, they just, they're almost right over each other. It's very difficult to see, and that's because there's not, there's not really much change. I also want to point out that the original site plan offered no affordable or workforce housing, uh, but the new development plan is going to include 15% workforce and affordable housing. That's 27 units. And under the proposed plan, the affordable units will increase in size from 658 square feet to the 842 square feet, which is going to be the same size of all the other build, of all the other units. So the affordable units will be the same size as the market rate units. Um, other changes to the development plan include the addition of a bocce court and two small pickleball courts in lieu of what was one tennis court that was previously approved. Um, I'm learning more and more about pickleball. Uh, aging adults are gravitating towards pickleball because I guess it's less physically demanding than tennis, so the amount of space the two pickleball courts will take will be the same as the previously approved tennis court. Um, the revised site plan is gonna propose, it proposes 270 parking spaces, which exceeds the 256 spaces that are required by code, but, uh, as Planning Bar- Department recommended, uh, that my client, uh, consider reducing the number of parking spaces by about 14, by either eliminating the spaces or landbanking them. My client's fine with that. She's just not sure whether we're gonna eliminate or landbank them. Either way, they're gonna be green, so there's not gonna be parking spaces there. Um, and then finally, with respect to the modified conditions, again, there's three. To enlarge the footprint, enlarge the square footage, and to decrease the amount of landscaped area. So condition five is the total building, uh, footprint, and we were limited to, my client was limited to 93,600 square feet. He's proposing 107,561 square feet, which is a 14.9% increase. Condition six, which was the total square footage of all buildings, shall not exceed 186,000 square feet. Uh, he is proposing 201,326 square feet. That is an 8.2% increase. And then condition 10, which is a minimum landscaped area, required a minimum landscaped area of 464,542 square feet. Um, my client is proposing to reduce that to 394,488 square feet, which is a 15% decrease. However, as was mentioned in the memo, and I think it bears repeating, uh, condition nine, uh, which is not being modified, required a certain amount of natural area. My client's plan proposes, uh, about 82,000 square feet more than he needs of natural area. So we could easily comply by removing the natural area and turning it into landscaped area, but I just don't think that makes sense. Uh, either way, it's gonna be open space, and as the memo points out, the natural area is better, is for, better for habitat, et cetera. Either way, it's not being developed, but I just want to point out that we could comply and not have to ask for a modification of condition 10, but then we'd have to reduce the natural area on the site, and we'd prefer not to do that. And then Suffolk County Planning Commission, uh, as was mentioned, issued a letter of local determination, and then finally, the Planning Department issued the memo that was read earlier, and that summarizes the applications and my client's development proposal very well. Uh, we have reviewed that, and I've reviewed it with my client and the resolution of approval, and I'm, uh, pleased to say my client, uh, finds all of the conditions that were recommended to be acceptable. So if this Board approves, uh, this application, um, the, the conditions, uh, that will be imposed are fine with us. And I have nothing further. I have Mike Moranis here to describe the site plan, if I could. Mike?
Good evening. My name is Michael Moranis, licensed engineer, state of New York. I work for the firm Barapanachi and Van Wheel, 175A, Commerce Drive, Hop Dog. Uh, just a couple of things. Sure. Uh, just a couple of things that I wanted to point out, um, that, uh, Mr. Guardino may not have touched upon. The layout specifically is unchanged from what was approved. The road network is identical, the, the location of the, the intersection is identical. The layout of the parking is identical to what was previously approved. The only thing that's being changed is some of the footprints of 11 of the buildings are growing in size. That's the change that we're here for with regard to engineering. In order to accomplish that, it, I understand it's necessary to come back for a, um, site plan approval to modify the plan, and that, those changes are going to pretty much include a modification of some of the drainage. We have to increase some of the drywell capacities of the project in order to accommodate for the additional impervious area. Um, and there might be some discussion about eliminating some landbank parking, which Mr. Guardino had referenced before. Other than that, the concept is the same. Uh, did want to highlight that the, um, natural buffers that were previously approved and required are being maintained of 150 feet to the west and 100 feet to the east. So there's no disturbance of those, those buffer areas. That's really all I have to offer, if there's any- If there's anything else or any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have with regard to the plan specifics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Please step up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Bob Soto. I live in Niskanza, right near the project. S-O-U-T-O. Thirty, almost 30 years back and forth with this. Thirty years. You know about it. Almost 30 years. Okay? I hope a new traffic study is going to be done here, because we're going to add 80 apartments, 80 families, probably 240 more cars to roads that are already stretched thin. You can't stay on the road and not go one mile an hour between the hours of nine in the morning, or eight in the morning and 10 o'clock, and then again, you know, you all know this. And then again, from one to six, you can't move in there. And they're going to be retirees. That's what we were told. He says that they're workers now. They need more place to, to relax. Yeah, this is true. They are workers. They did not tell us the truth. Did not tell us the truth. The footprint's going to get bigger? We're not so concerned about that. The traffic is the issue. Are they going to increase the size of the STP? I wonder. You're going to have maybe 240 more people in there using the bathrooms. Are we going to take care of that? Is the lake going to get flooded with, with feces from this going down the road? I mean, this whole thing, for 30 years, it was up to 300. I don't know where you got 190. It was up to 300, then it went down to 250, then down to 190, and we all stopped complaining at 180 because we thought it was going to be a good thing for older people in our community. Because they said they were going to sell their houses, they told us, they were going to sell their houses for a million dollars, they were going to downsize and move into a 700-square-foot apartment. This is what we were told. But we said, okay, 180, they're senior citizens, they need a place to stay, there, some of it's affordable, it's all good. Now he comes back, he wants another 80. He knew he wanted 80 from the very beginning. He knew this was going to happen. I hope you people please consider all of this when you're making this important decision. It affects many, many people in Niskanza. And the people of Niskanza right now are fed up. We've had it up to here. Not just for development, it's the traffic. We can't live like this. And there's no way to widen that Smithtown Boulevard. It is impossible. God forbid, one of those old people in that development who are retired, I thought, when they get home from work.
Please address your.
If they have a heart attack, I hope an ambulance can get in there between the hours of one o'clock and six o'clock, or nine, eight o'clock and 10 o'clock. You can't get a bicycle on that road at that time. I drive it every day. An ambulance will never get in there both ways. It's not happening. God forbid someone gets sick. I hope you people weigh this. It's not all about the money in America. It's not all about money. So let's weigh all this, please. And you know what? Very poor character.
Excuse me, sir. Please address your comments to the board. Excuse me, sir. Please, please address your comments to the board.
He's an immoral.
Okay.
It's a disgrace what he did.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
Come on up.
And please, and state your name and address for the record for us, sir, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Andrew Gray, 20 Leiter Drive, Niskanza, spelled G-R-A-Y. Thank you for letting me be heard. As I understand it, the current amendment precedes the, the previous amendment from 2020. Okay? And the number of housing units remain unchanged at 180, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this parcel of land, I've, I've heard some different numbers. Is it 24 acres or is it 19 acres? Maybe you can help me with that.
Mr. Guardino? Actually, the overall piece was 24 acres, and then 19.25 acres roughly was rezoned to the RC. So the other part remains in the residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I guess, for my own edification, if we were to take those, that parcel of land, that 19.24 acres, how many single housing dwellings would we have as opposed to the 180 units that are going to be in this, in the preserve?
It would be based on the zoning regulations.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get a difference, you know, would it be more or would it be less in terms of single-family houses? So that's a question that I have. You can't answer it. That's okay. I have, I have a few more, though. So the 2020 change, the attorney stated that Kathy Court was removed from egress. Is that correct?
Correct.
Sounds correct to me. Okay. So my question is, is the only egress from Smithtown Boulevard in the current proposal? That's correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So there'll be no egress from any of the surrounding?
No, no.
Streets?
Be private and right in that one, in, you know, the one entrance and the exit.
Okay. So my concern is Smithtown Boulevard with traffic. So I hope that's taken under consideration with those units, with those additional units. There was also mentioned 27 units of affordable housing. So I'd like a little bit more information on that, maybe the attorney?
Well, I, I think when everyone is finished speaking, Mr. Guardino might be able to address some of those questions, but we'll wait till everyone has their turn to speak first, so this way he can address all the questions at one time. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And I might have one more. Oh, so in terms of the, one other question, in terms of the affordable, affordable housing, is that part of like a, a federal regulatory type thing, or is that something you just like to do? You'll answer that, too. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would, would like to speak?
Come on up.
Again, come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Sandra Alcide, A-L-C-I-D-E. I live on 9 Leiter Drive. My, I, a lot of, of my questions have already been clarified, which I appreciate. My, my concern is, okay, maybe I didn't understand the, the terminology. Will Leiter Drive be opened as an exit or an entrance?
No.
Okay. I'd like to know, just for emergence. I'm sorry?
Would you like it open?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No. Because it's a very small, narrow block to begin with, and we cannot have the traffic. Where will the exits and entrances be? Is it only on Smithtown Boulevard?
Correct.
Right behind you.
Correct.
Okay. And also, the natural buffer, will that remain the same, or do they need? We have a very small buffer of trees between the, it's a dead end, Leiter Drive, and the same thing with Kathy, to where we can see these homes. Do they want more of that land, or will that remain?
That will remain.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Name and address?
Steve Geraputa.
Now, can you please come up to the mic?
My voice is loud enough, you probably don't need a mic.
Well, we're on, the whole, the meeting is being recorded.
Steve Geraputa, G-E-R-R-A-P-U-T-A, 7 Kathy Court. So the traffic is ridiculous, and to reiterate what he's saying, that I have to go, maybe four blocks to get to Smithtown Boulevard, and then another couple to get to the pizza parlor. And I could probably walk there faster than I could drive about dinnertime to, to be, I mean, I could walk to three 7-11s and a Cumberland Farms from my house. When we moved in here 25 years ago, there was none of that. There was a, there was a beer dock, and you couldn't even go straight through Gibbs Pond to get to Smithtown Boulevard. You had to go around because there was no direct path. So, you know, once we heard this, my, my main concern is that it, every few years, we hear something else, something different. We're going to do this, now we're going to do that, we want to do this, be thankful that we didn't do that, but we're going to do this now. I mean, 100-foot, the 100-foot buffer is kind of silly. I mean, if it's, if it's 100-foot, I don't know, I've never gone in there and actually measured it out, but, you know, even in full summer, I could see straight through those trees from my bedroom window, right through to whoever's going to be living in that house that's right behind me on Kathy Court, I'm going to be able to wave to them, and they're going to be able to wave back to me. I really wish that there was some, you're talking about landscaping and to try to get rid of some landscaping. I wish they would put some trees up, maybe, that are tall enough and thick enough so that we don't have to see it. I mean, bad enough we have to live it. I wake up every morning to the sound of backup beepers. Beep, 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 every day. And I know that's temporary, and it's going to go away once the buildings are there, but I could just imagine what, what's going to happen next. And the environmentals that were done 25 years ago, I think some things have changed in 25 years. Weather patterns, traffic patterns, the amount of people that are in the area, the amount of 7-11s that you could walk to. Now, it's going to be, it's just, when is, when does it stop? Every, every few, you know, I, I'm waiting for the meeting that I have to come where they want to go north and take over the rest of that, that area. I'm sure that that's probably in the plan. I mean, I don't know when enough money's enough for something like this. And for the people that live right in the area, you know, most, you could notice, look, there's like hardly anybody here, because if you're four blocks away, I guess you don't care. You don't care that it takes you 10 minutes to get to the pizza parlor, maybe, or you go the other way. But for the people that live right in that area, right there, literally, right there, I'm disappointed every day when I drive down my block and I see a big dirt mound, you know? I guess maybe I wouldn't mind so much if there were trees there or something that I didn't have to look at it and be reminded of it every day, how this just keeps changing. You know, the traffic patterns. I hope a new environmental has to be done for this, because I thought that that would, definitely would have had been done last time when we were talking about this, because the old ones were 25 years old. So now, you know, you approve that, now we're going to make the buildings bigger, we want to maybe, you know what, we don't want to landscape that much built, much stuff. It's easier for us to just leave the trees there, so we don't have to pay money for landscaping. All right, whatever, that, that's, that's fine, too. But I really wish that it would, there's some end. It doesn't ever seem to be an end. How do we come to an end? Or it's just, this is the way it is in Smithtown, that if, I guess if you just keep pushing and pushing and keep going and going, you get what you want, you get a big tax break. I don't get a tax break. I pay more money. Every year, I'm paying more money. Whether I have to walk to CVS or, or, you know, I, I heard once that you, they were going to put some park benches in the park for us. Oh, I mean, I don't need a park bench. I really don't. I need peace of mind that, I, I lived here for 25 years, and I would love to continue living here. But things like this are making it more and more difficult for regular folks like me who live and work, and I'm over 55, and I do still work, and, and, and it's just, it's just, it gets getting me right here, because I really loved the area. When we moved here, it was a nice, quiet neighborhood. And now it's metropolacy, you know, it's, especially with, with all the, the 7-11s and Cumberland Farms and this and that. It's just, it just seems like this was just like the, that final stab in our back, that, you know, it's pretty much like saying, you know what, you people, we don't really care about you. We care about building more stuff and making Niskanza to be this metropolis for some reason, which I can't understand, other than I can understand why they want that, because they make money. I mean, you know, that's, but, but like Bob said, it's not always all about money, is it? But sometimes, I guess it is. And it's just disappointing, and I just wanted you guys to know that I felt. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Come up, sir, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lou Itarajo, last name spelled A-R-A-U-J-O, 16 Leiter Drive. So I just wanted to say, for the record, there's no increase in the amount of, of units, 180. There was no proposed increase?
Correct.
All right. So with them looking to increase the size of the buildings, it was pitched as a retirement community. Now, one of the main arguments is, okay, we have working people here, and they're going to need more space, working remotely, this, that, and the other. So proposing to change 100% of the buildings based off of some of those arguments of, you know, you need more workspace and stuff, is it really a retirement community? Or can we say, like, has there been a study shown on, all right, my market is going to be 80% retired, 20% working? Why the need to increase the size of all the buildings if this is a work community, if this is the retirement community? Why the need for the increase in all the buildings?
It's not all the buildings.
If, if I'm not mistaken, I think they mentioned they wanted to have all the buildings the size of.
Type A.
Type A, yeah. So they, they want to amend all the smaller buildings to be the biggest one, basically, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So if they can address that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
They will, thank you. Anyone else? Again, your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Wollney, 15 Leiter Drive.
Spell your last name?
W-O-O-L-N-E-Y.
Thank you.
15 Leiter Drive in Niskanza. Since the rest of my neighborhood has spoken up, we really need you guys to listen and go out on the roads at those particular times. You know, I have three kids, I'm here over 20 years, I have three kids now that are growing up, and they're getting their licenses and they're driving, and they have to go out into those roads. You know, my wife was hit turning onto my block, because once they change that elbow at Gibbs Pond Road to be a straight-through, people come flying around that bend. They don't pay attention. You know, it's getting very dangerous. I understand they want to increase the size of these buildings, but does that mean at some point that those units that are in those buildings can be altered to be a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom? I mean, you're shaking your head no, but I know I can take a piece of two-by-four and some sheet rock and divide a room and make a bigger bedroom, or make a second bedroom.
What would the attorney do, set when he's, at the end of the questioning, okay?
And as far as everybody else has said, too, this was pitched as a retirement community. It's not sounding like that anymore. It's sounding like an invasion of my neighborhood that I've been in for 20-something years now. I don't know how long you people have lived in the area, but I'm sure you.
15, 16 years.
And I'm sure you've seen a lot of changes, and it's getting worse. You can't accommodate all these cars and all this traffic on the roads. You just can't. I would like you to be able to figure it out and do something about it, but I don't, there's no land to do it. So those are, just to add on to everybody else in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Name and address?
Christine Geraputa, 7 Kathy Court. I didn't have time to prepare anything I wanted to say, because we got a certified letter in the mail that told us it was about something that we had to dig up ourselves. So the assumption from everyone was that it was going back to the 78 units. That's why everybody's coming up here and saying that. So I know you're disgusted that that's the first thing that you're going to say.
Can you please address your questions and your comments to the board? I'd be appreciative.
Okay. I know they're going to come up and say that there's going to be no increase in apartments, and I'm telling you that I understand that, that they're just trying to make them bigger so we get to see bigger buildings instead of smaller buildings. This is the first I'm hearing of a tennis court and a bocce place, too. So I didn't know we would be hearing tennis balls going on for these retirees. Like I said, we were given no information in this certified letter except when it was and what it was about. So we all assumed that they were looking to go north into and, and add more apartments, which I'm not going to doubt will come sometime in the future. What I'm also concerned about is where I specifically live. If it's possible, I don't know, I wasn't prepared to print up nice pictures to show you, but I have a picture that I would like to show everyone in my phone. I don't know if that's allowed. Is that allowed?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want you guys to see. This used to be completely trees. This is what I see outside my bedroom window now. If you zoom in, you can see the truck. Okay? We were getting 100-foot buffers out. This was all trees. It was dark all the time because not a piece of sun came. This was all trees, it was dark all the time because not a piece of sun came through. This is what we have now. With the big truck in there, okay? Doing beep, 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 Saturday mornings. Saturday mornings included, I don't know why they work on Saturday, but they do. We were promised a 100-foot buffer zone, which we kind of thought maybe some trees would be there that we wouldn't see it. Now we see twigs. And, and big, oh, I'm sorry. And a big sand dune.
Were trees taken down?
Oh, my goodness, of course!
Just a question.
The whole, yes, I'm sorry that I reacted that way, but that was the first thing that upset us the most, was having acres and acres of trees, of course.
No, I mean, in the 100-foot buffer? Were trees removed from the 100-foot buffer?
First of all, I'm not positive that we were even left 100-foot buffer, but if, I would love to ask if there's any kind of landscaping that they're thinking of redoing or going on, to add some things that last through winter to block all of that would make everyone a lot happier.
Your questions will be answered at one time when everyone is finished, and I'm sure that'll be addressed, okay?
Okay, I'm bringing it out there to be addressed, because it wasn't brought up before.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna bring up the traffic and all of that, because we've already established that we're hoping more people aren't being brought into these bigger apartments, but we don't know that. Like, someone said, you could easily fit more people in the space that they now wanna make these size A buildings. Now you get the 55 and older, I don't know if it's a requirement to have the one person that lives there be 55 and older, or everyone?
No, it's everyone.
Okay, if it's everyone and you have these several apartments with two bedrooms, I guess a lot of sharing will be going on, because our last look was about $3,000 an apartment, so to make them bigger, I guess they needed to make them bigger, 'cause maybe they weren't getting the amount of money they wanted for the smaller ones. We've been trying to look up information as this has been going on, and we saw that they were asking for about $3,000, which is, these people might as well stay in their homes and pay a mortgage. But anyway, like I said, I didn't have time to prepare, so if I sound like I'm rambling, I don't mean to, but I really wanna get through to you that we don't have the faith that anybody is going to say everybody in there is 55 and older, and now all of a sudden Grandma's son, who's having troubles, has nowhere to go, and he's gonna take the other apartment, because I don't think anybody's gonna be policing them to make sure that everybody in there really lives there, or who really lives there should be there. So that's one thing that we, my neighborhood has a big concern with. Who's really gonna be living in there? Because once, you know, I'm 55, once I move in, and now my, you know, cousin's son who's having trouble and has nowhere to live and could be a problem in the area, not gonna come live with me, who's gonna know? Something to think about, believe me. All we do is think about it when you're living the way we are, besides the noise, which, like I said, we know we can't help. This has all been passed already, and we know that all they want is bigger buildings. All I'm asking for is, stop the noise on Saturdays, how are we gonna be guaranteed that these people are really living there? How are we gonna be guaranteed that in two years from now, we're not gonna be fighting for them to get 78 more in the north, which is what we thought it was when we were looking back at what they said this meeting was about? And more importantly to me, it's, yeah, 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 Cathy's Court's okay today, but now, oh, now we decided these things are bigger, they're gonna take up more room, that might take up the little pathway we had planned for the ambulances, and we're gonna open them up. How do I know today that that's never gonna happen? Because ever since this all started again, it's been, we have to move, we have to move. Who's gonna wanna buy this house? That we took 25 years to redo every room, to make sure they get a bigger space of a thing of living than we do? And is he, are there any tax incentives going to him even more than the last time? Because I haven't gotten a darn one, not a dime, to live with this nonsense now, when I used to have a quiet woods over there, and deer would come out. Now, when this all started, it was, what's the dead goose doing on so-and-so's lawn? Did you see the fox in the backyard? I mean, we're living it, and I'm tired of it, but I just want some answers about how much more this is gonna keep getting bigger and bigger, because it's a nightmare already. I just, how much is enough money?
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I forgot one comment, my comment...
This gentleman, come up first and...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Ricardo Mencuso, 6 Cathy Court. I moved here from Italy, okay? When I moved to Cathy Court, I was like so happy. I've been living in Cathy Court for the past 12 years. I bought the house really, I'm like, we're going to live here forever, you know? Now, ever since this happened, this whole thing happened, I really want, I wanna sell, you know? And I know I'm not gonna get what I paid for this house. This project is really ruining the area, okay? The traffic is crazy, already as it is. I cannot even imagine that we're gonna have whatever number it is, like 90 people, extra 90 people living in this area, you know? It's already crazy as it is. I have two little kids, they love playing on the street, they always have to see these buildings now. If we could at least have the privacy we used to have. We see all windows of these people, these new neighbors. If we could have like a buffer at least, that, especially in the winter, you see exactly what goes on back there, okay? It's not what we used to, okay? And I hope you really consider having Mr. Soonis pull more trees and really cover up what's going on, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And now, one last speaker, just wanted to add an additional comment. Your name again?
Again, it's Sandra Alcide, A-L-C-I-D-E, 9 Lyta Drive, resident for over 20 years. This is maybe not a major issue, perhaps it would be. It is called the Preserve, which is a wonderful marketing name, however, it truly was, past tense, a preserve of animals, a real true, the last of the nature preserve in this concept, and it's getting less and less unfortunately in Suffolk County. There are no longer the beautiful hawks, they've been driven out, we don't know where they were, we would see beautiful hawks, we would see, the foxes sometimes would come out. I would, we would walk there without children years ago and see these little cute little things running around, and I was a, I'm a runner, and it was quite nice for a little patch of escape. Again, it's no longer a preserve, let's forget about that, that's gone, because, and we've noticed the difference, there's no other beautiful birds, they lost their place to live. Perhaps there may be some kind of solution, but if they, if they could, I know they need all the property they want, is maybe grow more trees. I mean, of course, the hawks preferred the 30, 40-year-old trees and what have you, but maybe they, we can possibly bring back some kind of true nature, because it's just, it's gone. And the only thing we have is a small patch, thank goodness, by New York State of, that's real tiny, but again, we've, I'm not going to go over the comments, it's really, it's just a shame that it's not a preserve anymore.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Okay, Mr. Gordino, did you want to maybe just answer one or two of those questions?
Yes, I hope so.
Mr. Gordino, would you start with the affordability aspect of it first, please?
Sure, so, so the affordable housing is, is actually required, I'm sorry, my apologies. Sorry about that. It's required now, was not required at the time of the original approval. It is now required by both the town code, it's also required by the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, which is a state statute that requires, when you have a change of zone or an increase in density, that you set aside 10%. So the requirement is 10%, my client's actually proposing 15%. So it's additional affordable housing above and beyond. And also, you know, historically, when developers were required, and again, my client was not required, but when they were required to include an affordable set aside, you know, you found, you know, the units to be smaller and different and in different locations sometimes, my client's actually integrating this in, and the units will all be the same size. So there'll be no, you won't be able to look at a unit and say, oh, that's an affordable unit, it's gonna be the same size as the market rate units, so everybody will have the same amount of space. I...
I don't know, is Mr. Soto here?
I don't know, he kinda made some wild accusations, and there were a lot of false statements, and he just wanted to stick around to hear the answers. You know, again, this is a reduction from 192 to 180, I know the board understands that, I don't know where he was saying we're adding 80 units, I don't know where that even came from. So that I don't really understand.
One speaker at a time, please.
You know, his concern about the, you know, the retirement community designation, that's the zoning designation, I didn't make that up, my client didn't, that was a change of zone, he purchased this site, it was already zoned RC, RC Retirement Community. Retirement communities are defined as communities with people, for occupants that are 55 and older. I will correct, I just wanna be clear, it's not everyone has to be 55, 'cause that's the law. The law requires one person to be 55, not everyone to be 55. So I don't want somebody to say, aha, I saw somebody in there that's 48 years old and they shouldn't be here, because they, that's not our choice, that's what the law requires.
Please, man, we're out of order right now, please.
Yeah, can I speak, please? You know, and, you know, with respect to be retirement community, listen, again, it's the designation, it's 55, I'm 61, I'm still working, I think Mr. Carafuto said he's, you work on, you said you were over 55. Again, it's a designation, it wasn't meant to be only retirees can live here, it's people who are eligible to live in this zoning district. And people are more active, and they do need a little bit more space. I mean, everyone wants a little bit more space, we're not looking to increase the number of bedrooms, we're not looking to increase the number of units. Whatever was approved back in 2020 is still being approved, we're not adding any more cars or people, which would then increase the amount of traffic, we're not doing that. Adding a few hundred square feet to an apartment is not gonna create more traffic. I think Mr. Gray, well, he mentioned about traffic and affordable housing, yes, we talked about that. Ms. Outside, and I don't know if you got my message, I left you a message, 'cause I know you called me with questions, but I didn't hear back, but the 100-foot natural buffer will remain? It will be, I'm sorry, it will be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure she was here to hear it, because it's a 100-foot buffer, it is required to be there. I will, I will add, and I think Mrs. Carafuto also asked for maybe some more trees, my client's fine with that, during the site plan process, if during the site plan process there's a need to supplement the buffer, particularly along Cathy Court, we can do that, that's not a problem. But the 100-foot buffer is there, we would also agree to a condition, I know there's a concern that, oh, maybe someday they'll open it, we'll agree to a condition that it never be open to Cathy Court, 'cause that's what this proposal is. Okay, so the traffic, I talked about, no change in units. There was a concern about, you know, additional bedrooms, that they might increase the sanitary flow. There are no additional bedrooms, so it's not gonna increase the sanitary flow, but I would also point out that, you know, in 2022, the fixtures, the plumbing fixtures are much more efficient than they were in 1996, when this was studied for things like wastewater. You know, now you have low-flow toilets, you have sinks with water restrictors, showers with water restrictors. So the amount of water that flows through the units is a lot less than it was, so I think from an environmental point of view, particularly with sanitary, talking about sanitary impact, it will be less, because again, number one, it's 12 less units than was studied, plus you have all of this, these new fixtures that are significantly more Mr. Rajo, I think you had talked about the, you know, questioning about the size of the building, again, I think we answered that, and I called you as well, I don't know if you got my message. Mrs. Carafuto, you mentioned about the notice, I only send the notice that the town gives me, I don't generate the notice, so we have an obligation to send the notice out that's provided. So to the extent it wasn't informative enough, I know, I attach a letter to it, which basically says, "Call," and some of your neighbors did actually call. They say, "Call if you have any questions," and I provided to Mr. Korth, who is, who runs the, or is on the board of the Cleary School for the Deaf, he had called me and asked me for a copy of the site plan, which I gave him, and I gave him the overlay to show him the difference between the units. Okay, so that's that, we add the trees.
Excuse me, please remain silent.
We will add the trees, if that's what's required, if the neighbors want that. Again, can't restrict the 55, and we'll agree to the condition. Yeah, that's, I think that's everything, I don't know if there's something I missed that I didn't answer, I'm happy to do so.
I think you pretty much took care of the questions that were asked, yes.
Okay, and I'll leave my card for any of the neighbors if they want to continue to communicate with me, I'm happy to speak with them.
Thank you, Mr. Gordino.
Thank you.
Thank you, by the way, for accommodating me. I appreciate my schedule, I have to run to another meeting after this, thank you very much.
You're welcome, and I, at this point, there won't be any more additional questions, and I will now make a motion. In the matter of zone change petition 2022-02, amendment of conditions of zone change petition 90-03A, The Preserve at Smithtown LLC, a move that we close the hearing.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The hearing is closed. And in the matter of recommendation for zone change petition 2022-02, The Preserve at Smithtown LLC, amendment of conditions of zone change petition 90-03A, a move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? The motion is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where do we get a copy of everything that was decided for 20 minutes, like we, because we don't know anything that you said was being submitted, the citizens, the holder raised, and where the tennis court's gonna be, where do we get a copy of that?
No, you can get a little booklet, so I can see right now.
You can have mine.
No, it's...
You can get a copy of what I read from our department, if you just walk in, we can make a copy for you.
I can write it now.
All right. Demanding.
Let's take Ms. Outside, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, we're gonna move on to the next application.
So all of our comments meant zero?
No.
You just approved it, not even like a little thing about it?
Yep. So hopefully, you're gonna have the book you have by your house, and it is happening that you did.
I hope you save all that.
Yeah. I guess that guy did have a point.
Okay, the next item is a preliminary subdivision recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals for Jamie Anita Estates. At the April 20th, 2022 Planning Board meeting, at the request of the Planning Board and the neighbors adjacent to the subject property, the planning department looked into the feasibility of maintaining the existing cul-de-sac with a small roadway extension into the subdivision to the north. The planning department prepared to sketch feedback from the traffic safety, engineering, and highway departments. Each of those departments were not in favor of this design and felt it would be difficult and dangerous for large vehicles, such as buses, garbage trucks, delivery trucks, and plows, to back down the extended road. They also advised us that the situation is different from Lower Court, Mildred Court, and Boisol, as those roads extend further to another cul-de-sac or intersect another road. Based on the feedback, it is therefore recommended that the Board adopt one of the resolutions prepared by the planning department in the memorandum dated April 15th, 2022.
Mr. Tramaco?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramaco, I represent the applicant. I guess the last time we were here, myself and my client maybe could've been clearer as to why we think the double driveway, if you will, is most efficient and the least dis... disruptive in the neighborhood. But I couldn't have said it better than the planning department, given the facts that if you look at their April 15th memorandum to the Board, basically, they're saying, well, the extending the cul-de-sac will reduce the lot frontage to setback from 100 to 90, but the need for frontage, more frontage can be eliminated. Extending the cul-de-sac provides possible access to adjacent property owners to the north. And extending the cul-de-sac spreads the distance between the driveways. This will allow for additional street parking and a better case of snow plowing. Well, I think the, first of all, if you look at the cons, the cons really outweigh the pros. And the planning department indicated that the cul-de-sac will disturb more land. And my client will, I'm going to ask him to talk about that again. It certainly is going to remove a heck of a lot more vegetation and create much more impervious surfaces. This is truly a time where less is better than more. I know most of the time, when I represent applicants, we come in and we say, well, we want to just want a little bit more because we need to put an extra house in or whatever. Here, we're not asking to put in any extra housing. All we're asking to do is to make what is in effect a driveway at the end of the existing cul-de-sac, which will go to the two proposed houses. Those two proposed houses will have exits, ingress and egress from the far end of their plots, not immediately at the end of the existing cul-de-sac. So even the disturbance of cars coming in and out, the neighbors who live along the existing cul-de-sac right now will really have no effect. The planning department goes into all of the things that make this a horrendous job. And the horrendous job would be all the existing drainage, the pools within the existing cul-de-sac may have to be removed. My client calls it the fiber optics, the water, the electricity, everything is going to have to be redone. The disturbance there, just to close that cul-de-sac and add curbs, dirt, grass, extend the driveways. It's a major, major job, which probably will go on for at least a year, a year and a half. And there's no way that it can be avoided if we're required to extend the cul-de-sac. The question of appearance, well, I think if you have two driveways, actually, a width of about together, maybe 26 or 28 feet, with either cobblestone curbing or regular curbing, whatever the planning department decides, it won't look any different than a road coming off the cul-de-sac that exists. And finally, you know, when you look at the type of cul-de-sac, I don't know if Mac can put that up there, the drawing? No, you can't, okay. Well, it's an odd-shaped cul-de-sac. It benefits only one person, and I think my client indicated the last time, that it benefits a person, basically, I don't know north from south there, but on the left side. And that person already has access by a flag lot road that comes in and connects to her property. My client did try and speak to the owner a number of times, and apparently, for whatever her reason is, and she has a right not to sell her property, she doesn't want to talk about any type of acquisition. The property to the other side, to the right side, really gets no benefit because the way the cul-de-sac has to be constructed is it only benefits the owner of the person with the flag lot and the cottage. It doesn't give any benefit to the individual on the other side of that cul-de-sac because her property goes past any way that we can get access to that property. So in this case, I think more is not the good thing. It's a bad thing. The only thing that we could do, and to make it more pleasant to the people that live there now, is driveways off of the existing cul-de-sac. And again, my client's going to indicate to you that all the work will be restricted to his property. There'll be no work on the existing cul-de-sac. So the benefit there is great to the neighbors, and probably that's my fault, that I didn't explain it well enough. All construction will exist on my client's property. So there won't be any kind of disturbance to the people that live in the area. So I think less is much more beneficial in this case than, you know, disrupting everything for a year, a year and a half. And what's the benefit? Maybe that person will want to extend her property and do another lot there. I believe there's an existing building on the property right now in the rear. But Mr. Patelli can get into that, and I'd like to call him. Frank?
Frank Patelli, 16 Milldam Road, Smithtown. P is in Peter, I, T, T, E, L, L, I. I've been building in Smithtown for about 28 years, done many projects here. And again, I've always been told, less is better. When this project came up originally, I discussed this with, you know, departments of the town. And as far as the driveway was the most acceptable thing, because the cul-de-sac, again, is, there's nothing wrong with the cul-de-sac that's there. Again, extension of this road only benefits the lady that has the illegal house for 28 years, that's been renting it out, and she has a full-blown house there, plus multiple other structures on a vacant piece of land, that's not, that's being taxed at like $250 a year. And she has an illegal house with a tenant there. So the only person it benefits is that woman, not the other gentleman that has the property at the end, because he cannot be accessed from where the cul-de-sac would be. The amount of work to go in to this, destroying a cul-de-sac there is monumental. I've spoken to National Grid, PSEG, Suffolk County Water, Verizon, Optimum, and every one of them were like shaking their heads. They're like, we would have to tear everything up. And again, the people, I understand, and I get it, the people live next door, nobody ever wants development, and I get that part. I've been doing this for a long time. But again, we decided on this so that whatever my property is, my cars, my trucks, whatever, we'll be working on my property. We won't be in, you know, once in a while will there be a truck in the street, yeah, but we'll be working on my property because we'll be able to park at least six to eight vehicles, 10 vehicles, at any given time, right on my property and not bother any of the neighbors. The neighbors that are on either side of the property are the ones that are upset. I've spoken to them multiple times. I explained that if two driveways, we would do one curb cut, which give us about 26 to 28 feet between each of the curb cuts. And it's only taking up 26 feet of the entire cul-de-sac. I've built many, many cul-de-sacs in Smithtown. They have three, if not four driveways in them. You know, they're saying that three driveways are going to destroy everything. It's not going to destroy everything. It's the most simplest way to put this together. And again, it's massive amounts of disturbing, the road, cutting that road in, the drainage that is like literally probably 20 feet from the fronts of their houses, or 25 feet, because I know that the cul-de-sac cuts in and then it goes back. So some of the drainage pools are on their, right on their lawns, I mean, on their lawns. And the water that would have to be extended, would have to, they'd have to cut the whole road up. And that would leave my company, again, open to lawsuits, the police, the code enforcement, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for, you know, anywhere from 12 to 17, 18 months, because I can't control how long it's going to take National Grid to extend the gas mains, the Water Authority to do what they have to do, the PSEG, which, again, there's electric lines, everything would be disturbance to these people. I know they all don't think so right now, and everyone says it, but the moment that we start to work, well, I'm going to be getting the lawsuits because I've been there. I've done it. I've done it a couple of times, and, you know, on a smaller scale. And it's unfortunately, anybody that drives down there, plus, this is two of the neighbors, or three of the neighbors that are here, actually, two, two are here. What about all the rest of the people on the block that now, they can't drive down and turn around in the end of the block anymore, if we're starting to tear that all up? And it's going to take time by the time we put it together. And again, even when by the time we dedicate that other cul-de-sac, it's going to take some time. I know, I've been, I tried to get off bonds many, many times. It takes quite a bit of time. So that's still not even going to be a public road at that point. It'll still be private for a while. And we're only building two houses here. I did it at the least amount of disturbance. I went to everybody. Everybody was kind of, this is the best, you know, the best solution. And again, the only thing that this benefits is the person, which I'm dead set against, is the person on the other side, who I wasted three months talking to, and then decided to send us a letter because I found out that she had an illegal house. It's not even a shed. It's a full-blown house with two stories on it. And, you know, I know the building department was notified, and I checked into a couple of things today, and they were denied access. So, you know, I mean, that be what it may, but the issue is to put a cul-de-sac that costs $200,000 to do two houses that we can do. And I agreed with doing one curb cut, which is fine. And I would do like a 20, whatever the planning department deems is fit for there, maybe 22 feet, whatever. And then I would expand it out to about a 26-foot wide road going back, a private drive, going back so that the garages, and I told, I already told the people, I would design the house so that the garages would be into the back of the property. I would then break the two-car garages into a three-car, three-car parking, so technically they could, they could house eight cars on each of the driveways. They were complaining about landscaping, oh, there's not going to be any landscaping. I'm going to have more landscaping on these two houses than the other two houses are. I'm going to have at least 50 feet of sod, plants, trees. And at the end of the road, which would be, if there was a cul-de-sac there or ripped out, we would be destroying many, many more trees, tearing everything apart out there. And then at the end of the, at the end of the private road, I want to put evergreens, whether it be Leyland Cypresses or whatever. And again, speaking to planning, I can go through with them, so that there's a, you know, 12 months a year, if you're driving down that road and you're looking towards the end of it, you're going to see green. You're not going to see through to the, that two-story house that is like 15 feet off the property that's illegal. It's got no COs or anything on it. So I understand how people get upset, but, you know, just because somebody wants something, you know, and again, there is a cost factor to this, and there's a lot of, a lot of, I have to worry about liability to my company. I just don't do these two houses. I have many other things. And people all say great things now, but, you know, as soon as they get there, and all of a sudden their TV doesn't work because the fiber optic cable got cut. Or, you know, there's broken concrete or in the street. There's no way I would be able to police that every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And again, nobody for a period of time would be able to drive down to the end of that cul-de-sac once we cut everything and turn everything around, because it's not like everything's going to be ready right away. Utility companies, unfortunately, again, I'm at their beck and, you know, their mercy. They pick their times. So, you know, I just waited six months to get gas put in on somewhere where they told us two months. So we would have the road partly ripped up, and then we'd have to wait for them to come in, extend the gas mains. We'd have to disconnect these people's houses. It's not as simple as it looks. And again, to benefit someone that has an illegal house is really upsetting me, because it does not even, we can't even reach the other guy's property with this road. So again, you know, I'm all for, again, I think I've made a lot of concessions. I've spoken to the neighbors multiple times. No matter what I say, they're not going to be happy, and I understand that. But I've been doing this for 30-something years in hundreds of homes. I think this is a very simple, good plan. And then again, it's the least amount of disturbance. I'm not going to disturb anybody in the neighborhood. I'm building two houses at the other end of the block, and then I own the other four or five acres on, that's past it. So that's another whole thing that we have to do. But the issue is that we're not going to bother anybody on this block by doing my two homes the way we want to do it. Thank you very much for the time. And any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, this is the third time that this application has been before us, and we do have the minutes from the January 26th and April 20th meetings of this board. And we are aware of all of your comments. And if you'd like to add anything else that would be, you know, something that you haven't said before, if it hasn't been brought up before, haven't said before, you're welcome to speak. But if it's going to be the same, I do have all the minutes with me, so I know exactly what everyone said. If you have something new, then I welcome your comments with your name and address for the record. Something new?
I think there's more. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, yes, that's okay. You're a new speaker, that's perfect.
Thank you for your time.
Dana DiAmelia, 19 Westminster Court South in Wisconsin, D apostrophe A, M E L I A. I am the home on the end of the cul-de-sac to the right, if you're looking toward where the new builds are going to be. I unfortunately was unable to make the last meeting. I did have photographs that I passed off that I believe were submitted, and that was, I believe you had mentioned something with Bojol. I personally, looking at this, and I know they're saying that the less is more, I'm not looking to have my cul-de-sac, I don't, I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone else that had spoken prior. I personally would not want the cul-de-sac touched. What I'm asking and why I submitted Bojol, I know it's not exactly the same, but if you were to look at those photos, how they have what, to me, and I don't know, but was a cul-de-sac, and then I know it's a through street, but I'm asking to keep our cul-de-sac intact, so we don't have to go through everything that they're saying, which I wouldn't want, but just to extend a street. So it's a, and make it a dead end and put your Arbivites or your Leyland Cypresses and so forth. That way, it's a street. It addresses the snow problem that we are very concerned about. And it allows for more parking on the street besides the driveways. But my question is, I don't understand, it's an extension because it does theoretically most cul-de-sacs aesthetically, and keeping with the neighborhood is typically one house. And I understand that money comes into play here, like it always does, and two houses obviously garnish more money. But if this is, if this is going to be two homes, which I am against, I would prefer it being one, if it is going to be two, why can't we keep the cul-de-sac intact and just extend it and make a street for those two houses? I don't understand.
That's what we looked into. That was why we adjourned.
Oh, they're talking about the extra cul-de-sac and ripping ours up.
Right. We looked at all the options.
And can you just please, can you just make me understand then? Because I don't
Mr. Colado will answer that question for you.
Yeah, so we looked into keeping the cul-de-sac and then extending the road further north. We reached out to engineering, highway traffic. They were all not in favor of that, mostly due to like large vehicles not having an area to turn around. Buses, delivery trucks, the plows, they're going to be backing out now, once they go past that they don't have the, you know, the cul-de-sac to actually turn around in. And then what happens is people start using your driveway to back it, back up, and then those people start complaining, what they don't want. Because I've seen it. I've seen people complain that all the mail trucks, all the delivery trucks are using their driveway to back out, because they don't have, they don't live on a cul-de-sac, they live on a dead end. So
We, just two things to that point. We, our cul-de-sac, in my opinion, I've been in much bigger cul-de-sacs. I already get that. I, we have trucks coming down, they already are backing into my driveway as it is. So that's something that we already deal with, but whether that's relevant or not. But my thing is, why, look at this, I just lost my train of thought. As far as a typical dead end, what do they do with a regular dead end then? Isn't it the same thing? Because if a truck has to come down, say a snowplow or garbage truck, what do they do with, there are dead ends, what do they do with a typical dead end? There's no room to turn around there either.
You don't want to encourage it, though. It is a problem, right? I agree, it's a problem. So we don't want to like, we don't want to create more places in the town with that problem.
I know, I understand that, and I respect that. But my thing is, if, you know, in an ideal world, we wouldn't have anything built there. As it is, we're losing
an ideal world, we wouldn't have anything built there, as it is, we're losing all of our, you know, trees and so forth, which we, you know, in essence purchased when we moved there, that's what we wanted. But my thing is, to add the dead end, there are other dead ends, I understand you don't want to encourage that, but, to us, that would be the lesser of two evils, because to have something where it's a, a huge driveway with two homes, it's just not something I think is aesthetic in keeping with the neighborhood, so, I, I feel that's the lesser of the two evils, I understand that's not something, another dead end, but there are numerous dead ends through Nescot, Smithtown and so forth, so, I would propose that we at least consider that, rather than tearing up, it would keep the cul-de-sac intact, and at least give that street area for more snow, more cars, and I, I just think it would be more efficient.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there something new?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Philip DiAmelia, that's my wife, so, same house, at least for now. In the, in the study that you're, that, that was, that was done for the dead end, I just want to make sure that my understanding is, from a safety perspective, I understand all the, the money situation, it's, it costs more and so forth, but from a safety perspective, is it your understanding that they're saying it is more safe to have less, less area for the snowplow, for the snow, because I have two eighteen-year-olds that are just starting to drive, and I just want to make sure that you're stating that it is safer, I know you saying that they may have to back in or back out, it's safer, from a snow perspective, to have less linear footage for the snow area than it would be if I had the extended area, because my assumption is going to be, when it comes down to, when we have a, a large amount of snow, that if I have any kind of issues with my kids or so forth, trying to get out of there, I just want to make sure that your position is, that it is safer to what you're proposing, than it would be, um, it's safer to leave the cul-de-sac as it is, instead of extending the road. Just want to make sure I, I got the position correctly, from your, your perspective.
I can't speak on behalf of the other departments, so, we gave him the sketches to look at, they provided his feedback. Didn't say whether or not it was safer or not, um, I guess from backing, you know, trucks backing down a thirty-foot wide road without a cul-de-sac, I guess that's not, you know, less safer than the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that, so, for the record, if we can have them at least somehow, some, in that part of that study, for someone at least will tell us that it is safer, it will be safer from a standpoint of snow removal, to reduce the linear footage, instead of extending that road. I understand the backing out, I got that, that's from, you know, but I, I would, I would ask that we do get a statement from them, in their assessment, saying, when it comes to snow, it will be safer, or, what you're proposing is not more harmful or less safe for people backing out, uh, from their, from their driveways. So I think it's important that we know that, and I said, I'm not going to talk about the two houses, or the, you know, what it costs to rip up a, a cul-de-sac and so forth, that's fine. I, I just, I would like to make sure that I have, on the record, that I have a statement that says, that this does not propose any more danger, or less safe conditions for my family or, or the neighbors, getting in and out of their driveways when it comes to snow issues.
Yeah, so th- this is our third hearing on the matter, and we've prepared four different drawings for the other town departments to review. Uh, the first one is, yeah, application as proposed, with two driveways coming off. The second one was the P-shaped cul-de-sac, uh, that was an extension, that there was a lot of opposition to that. The third drawing was the, um, the extension of the roadway that you were talking about, I don't have it up on the screen, but it was basically about a thirty-foot extension of the road, um, basically thirty feet wide, about thirty feet in, that would allow, um, I guess it was just kind of like a pimple coming off the cul-de-sac, that would allow a place for the, uh, snow to be pushed, with two driveways coming off. And the fourth option was a ninety-foot extension, that basically took a thirty-foot wide road across the, uh, the applicant's property to the north property line. Uh, we presented it to the Highway Superintendent, the Traffic Safety Department, and our Engineering Department. The plan that's preferred the most is the plan that you see with the two, uh, driveways, because it's going to have the least disturbance to, uh, existing roadways, as well as neighboring properties, uh, such as yours. Um, they felt the last two options that we presented, um, I don't have the emails, uh, back, but they were very negative, uh, towards the roadway extensions.
And, and I, and I, and I guess that I was here for the, some of the other ones, and I totally got that those were the things, I actually said I was, I was actually for, I know you said there was, there may have been some negatives to the extended cul-de-sack, I actually said I was okay with the consult, with the cul-de-sack, because it gave us more road for moving snow, so that's what I was saying, so whatever the studies are, are we able to get a copy of those studies, so we can see that when it, from the Safety Board, or whoever does the safety assessment...
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's a study, but it's more or less, uh, an, an internal review by, uh, professionals in the various departments, subdivisions, and they responded by emails, basically stating their objection to it. As far as the snow removal, uh, they felt there's numerous cul-de-sacks all over the town, where you have, uh, driveways, uh, within ten, fifteen feet of one another, and, um, I know it may not be ideal, but, um, they managed to remove the snow. Um, they didn't see the, uh, the driveway situation, or having four driveways on a cul-de-sac as, you know, too daunting of a task.
So, and that's fine, that's all I was asking for, is whatever that communication that went back and forth...
We sent the photos that were submitted...
No, that's fine.
And believe me, I, I looked at those pictures, and I was like, well, that's a massive amount of snow. So we scanned them the next morning, sent them over to the Highway Superintendent, and said, what do you think?
Sure, and that's, uh, once again, I understand you have to make a decision, and whether it's tonight or no, for, no, all I'm asking for is, is there a way for us to get a copy of those records that spoke to that, because, once again, if they're doing it, whether you call it a study or a review, or whatever, there's some assessment that they are liable to do, that speaks to reducing that, that, the, the footage, I understand the disruption, but disruption goes away and it, it's there, the safety issue is a continual basis, so I just want to make sure that I can get a copy...
I can ask the Highway Department to put something, uh, more formal together.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great, that's what at least I have it for my, for myself, just to speak to, once again, it's more of a conspiracy, it's not, I have two eighteen-year-olds that are starting to drive, anybody that has kids, your nose, that's like, you know, your head wants to blow up, is the beginning, so, I just want to make sure I get a copy of that.
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to point out is, this is merely a, uh, recommendation by the Planning Board, I think as you all know, it, this matter is also pending before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and for the, uh, lot width variances. And, the Board of Zoning Appeals didn't know what variances to grant, uh, because they didn't know what the ultimate design of the roadway was going to be. Had we extended the cul-de-sac, a couple variances would go away. If we don't, well then there's a couple different variances. So what the Planning Board's role right now is, is to make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, so that the BZA can decide, all right, we're going to approve or deny, um, the variances needed to build the two houses. If the Board of Zoning Appeals goes along with the Planning Board recommendation, then the application's backed before this board, just for preliminary approval, so, we have at least another BZA hearing, we have another, uh, Planning Board, if it gets to preliminary subdivision, then once they, if everybody says, all right, this is the design we're going, and they get preliminary approval, then they have to file a final subdivision, because it's a three-lot, uh, subdivision. So there's numerous more, uh, steps in this process, um, and they're all public hearings.
Sure, and, and, uh, listen, I'm sure once this goes forward, it will go forward, and I understand it's a recommendation, once again, I'm, just for my own edification, I was asking for, whatever was proposed, I know they have to make a decision, yes or no, it, nothing is a hundred percent, I know there's decisions that have goods and bad outcomes.
I'll tell you, we spent a, we looked at a lot of different options on this.
I, I, I respect all the time that you guys put out to do this for the public, and for the, for the homeowners, it's just for, it's for myself, I said I have two young kids, so, I just wanted to see what was their assessment that was done, to says, that says, this is, you know, but they always could put the street there, I know they may say they don't want to, but they're saying they don't want to, so, if they're saying they don't want to, and they want to leave it as is, that means that they're making some sort of recommendation that, a situation, safety has to be taken into consideration, so, whatever documentation or email, say they can put together formally, I'd appreciate that they can put together, and they could send it to myself or anybody else in the, in the, the affected area and so forth, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
I just need some clarification. Phyllis Boczenski, B-O-C-H-E-N-S-K-I, twenty Westminster Court South, my property is to the west of that cul-de-sac. Um, I'm confused, because first I'm told two driveways, then it's going to be one community driveway, so I just need clarification on that. It went from twenty-two feet, now it's up to twenty-eight feet, is it one driveway, or is it going to be two separate driveways?
Well, I can answer that. Tonight we're going to be moving on this, and the Board is favoring the original proposal, which is two driveways.
Two driveways.
Yes.
Okay, and my other question is, what's the difference between cutting the street on this cul-de-sac, as opposed to the exact opposite side of, the other, uh, exact opposite end of that street? There's a house that Mr. Patelli just built, and that's a dead end, and there's nowhere to turn over there, so if they did it on that, and why can't they do it on the cul-de-sac?
That, I...
Or a T-turnaround, but it's a little different.
It's a little different.
It's different, it's a T-turnaround.
Yeah.
And it will lead to future development to the south.
And according to my plans, that cul-de-sac had possible future roadway.
That's why the question's been so difficult, because they are temporary turnaround easements, and if there was a significant amount of developable land to the north, I think the Board would have to think about this a lot more carefully, and they might be saying to the applicant, you know what, we brought the cul-de-sac up to your property, you need to extend it beyond, because there's potential for a lot more development to the north. But the Board's looking at this, and there really isn't that situation here, we're not seeing potentially, uh, a significant amount of development to the north, and that's why it's more advantageous to leave this existing cul-de-sac in place.
Okay, just, I'm just trying to visualize this cul-de-sac, you're going to have two houses facing each other, and from the street, you're only going to see the side of those houses, so aesthetically, it just doesn't look ple- uh, pleasing. These houses are built, going to be built sideways, you know, and I've gotten a couple of areas where Mr. Patelli had referred, that I go and see, and I did, and the only, what I find, found in common, was that, yes, there were driveways on the cul-de-sac, but all the fa- the houses were facing the cul-de-sac. So I just don't understand how this is going to look. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Chomarka, did you want to address anything?
Again, it's, it's my fault, maybe it's Frank's fault too, but I guess we're not being clear, clear. If we do the dri- if the Board, um, goes along with the driveways, it's going to look just like a, a street, only it'll be owned by the two, um, um, then owners of, of the new houses. So there really isn't any reason, um, to make it a, a dedicated street, the only people that will be going in and out of that are the, uh, owners of the two homes. The other question was, I think, um, well, how are the mail trucks going to deliver mail? Well, since the, this private driveway will come right out on the cul-de-sac, that's where they're going to deliver the mail. They're not going to drive in, they're going to, the people that own the houses will put a couple of mailboxes on either side, that's where the mail will be delivered, and that's where the garbage will be picked up. It's not, they're not going to, garbage truck isn't going to drive into a straight road, even if it was thirty-foot wide, how the heck would, they'd have to back out, and that doesn't make sense. So, it's going to look like a road, only it's going to be owned by the, the then owners of the, um, of the two houses, and it'll be like any other development, houses usually face each other when they're on a road, opposite to each other. We can't make them on a cul-de-sac if there's no cul-de-sac there. So, I hope that explains it a little bit, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Okay, then, uh, in the matter of number eleven ninety-five, map of Jamie Anita Estates, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The hearing is closed. And, in proceeding tonight, with the applicant's original proposed layout, I'd like to make a motion that in the matter of number eleven ninety-five, map of Jamie Anita Estates, I move that we adopt a resolution as read, in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The motion is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and now we have...
That's Highway.
How do I get the information?
You know, you can call the planning...
Contact the planning department.
Call, contact the planning department.
Yeah, you can call our office. Here. Let me give you my card. I think I have them. Yeah, I don't.
Is it the cattle? No, that's why I'm asking, because I know in the last...
Yeah, because I want more to do, because I want a table.
Yeah, I think it's just a one-drive, what we're doing.
Do you normally ride at the cattle? Okay, that's what's the big difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a, uh, recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I don't know where Vinnie went, this is his application, uh, for a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals for Abernonti Platt and Comac. This matter involves a request from the Board of Zoning Appeals to the Planning Board to review and issue a recommendation regarding variances currently pending before the BZA for the above referenced subdivision, case number one eight seven two six. The yield of this property in compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations is two lots. The applicant is requesting the following variances to increase the yield to three lots. On Lot One, reduce minimum lot frontage from one hundred feet to eighty-eight feet. Lot Two, reduce minimum lot frontage from one hundred feet to eighty-eight feet. And Lot Three, reduce minimum lot frontage from one hundred feet to eighty-eight feet. The Planning Board has the authority to grant variances within subdivisions, however, pursuant to section three twenty-two thirty-point-four of the zoning ordinance, the Planning Board does not have the authority to grant variances that would alter the density of a zoning district. This is an application to subdivide a one-point-seven-five acre parcel into three single-family lots. The property has two-hundred-sixty-five feet of frontage on Veterans Memorial Highway, the site is zoned R-21, and is surrounded by R-21 and R-15 zoning. All three lots comply with the dimensional regulations of the R-21 zoning district, except for lot frontage. The minimum lot frontage requirement is one hundred feet, the applicant is proposing eighty-eight feet of lot frontage for each lot. Article sixteen, section two seven seven six of Town Law authorizes the BZA to grant area variances within a subdivision, but requires the BZA request a written recommendation from the Planning Board concerning the proposed variances. Town Law does not describe the criteria that the Planning Board is supposed to use in developing a recommendation to the BZA, however, it seems likely that the recommendation should be based around the cores, the Planning Board's core mission regarding subdivision approval, that centers on the adequacy of access and infrastructure, and to evaluate whether the subject property can be used safely for building purposes, without danger to health or peril from fire, flood, drainage, or other menace to neighboring properties, or the public health, safety, and welfare. This recommendation does not examine the requested variances with respect to the five area variance criteria described in section, section two six seven B of Town Law, as the BZA is tasked with evaluating the recusative variances with respect to those criteria. The Planning Department offers the following comments for the Board's consideration. One, the subdivision fronts Veterans Memorial Highway, which is a state highway, the applicant has provided documentation from the New York State Department of Transportation, indicating they have found the subdivision acceptable. Two, the applicant has designed each driveway with adequate areas for vehicles to turn around, this eliminates the likelihood of cars backing out onto a highway. Providing adequate turnaround areas for the vehicles should be conditioned on any approval. Three, preliminary review of the drainage and grading plan indicates all the stormwater runoff will be contained on-site. Based on the above comments, it appears the adequacy of access and infrastructure on Veterans Memorial Highway is sufficient for the proposed dwellings, and the subject property can be used safely for building purposes without danger to health, or peril from fire, flood, drainage, or other menace to neighboring properties, or the public health, safety, and welfare. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration, Planning Board Resolution Number Blank Two Thousand Twenty-Two, Board of Zoning Appeals' Recommendation for Number Eleven Eighty-Eight, Map of Abernonti Platt, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a recommendation regarding variances associated with the subdivision, Number Eleven Eighty-Eight, Map Map of Abernathy Platt, that's BZA case 18726, now therefore be it first resolved, that the Planning Board hereby recommends the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the variances associated with the subdivision, number 1188, Map of Abernathy Platt, for the reasons presented in this memorandum and subject to the following condition. One, each lot shall provide a driveway with adequate area for vehicles to turn around in order to prevent cars from backing out onto Veterans Memorial Highway. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Planning Department. Second, resolve that this recommendation pertains solely to the variance requests before the Board of Zoning Appeals and not to the proposed lot layout, extent of regrading, building location, public improvements, or other aspects of subdivision design within the purview of the Planning Board. And third, resolve that nothing contained herein shall be construed or deemed as implicitly or explicitly approving or endorsing on the merits any subsequent request for approval of any subdivision for this property, whether or not the request arises out of any variances granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals for said property.
Mr. Schamacher?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. I apologize for walking out. I guess I was so glad with the last, uh, decision that I just walked out. But anyway, uh, I would, I would respectfully request that you follow the, uh, the recommendation of, of the Planning Department. As you can see, uh, it's really minor variances, uh, there's certainly enough lot area for the three, uh, houses to be built. So I ask the Board for their, uh, to follow the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Thank you. And, uh, apparently there isn't anybody left to, um, ask any questions, so I'll ask the Board if they have any questions. Any questions from the Board?
Nope.
Okay, then in the matter of number 1188, Map of Abernathy Platt, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The hearing is closed. And in the matter of Board of Zoning Appeals Recommendation, 1188, Map of Abernathy Platt, I move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?